Good morning, everybody. Welcome again to City Hall and to Council Chambers and to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, February 15th, 2002. Hope you all had a nice Valentine's Day yesterday. We have six members present, make that seven members present at this time, winning 10 for a quorum. So, short of beginning officially with the agenda for today, this being Friday as is customary, we do have a number of presentations and introductions by various council members. At this point in time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Burnson for a presentation.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is a little bit of a sad day for us because we're losing a very special city member, one that it's been my pleasure to work with through the years, and she is going to be leaving. And I normally don't read the resolutions, but Frankie has been involved in so many things with our city up until finally capping it with the head of the Transportation Department, DOT. But I'm gonna read these because I think for those of you that haven't been here through the years and aren't as old as I am, and nobody's as old as I am except for Nate, I am gonna do that. "Whereas we take exceptional pleasure in congratulating Frances Teresa," I wouldn't know that, Banerjee on her retirement from the city of Los Angeles after almost 25 years of distinguished service. Frances T. Banerjee began a professional career as a research associate in the Urban Transportation Systems Laboratory at Massachusetts Institute of Technology, our president's old alma mater, right? From October of 1973 to January of '76, she took the position of Senior Transportation Planner with the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG as we know it. Frankie moved on to becoming a planning manager for the Los Angeles Community Development Agency from January of '76 to 1978, overseeing the Los Angeles Downtown People Mover Program. From October '78 to June '83, she provided consulting services to the United States Department of Transportation through contracts with the MIT institution in Massachusetts. Frankie managed several regional transportation programs as strategic planning manager for the Southern California Association of Governments. She served as transportation manager for the City of Los Angeles Community Redevelopment Agency for four-year period. In 1987, she joined the Office of Chief Legislative Analyst and was promoted to the position of Assistant Chief Legislative Analyst in February 1988. Whereas from March '94 to July of '98, she served as Assistant General Manager for the City of Los Angeles Department of Transportation. She was responsible for land use and transportation planning, commuting, community service, transit services, securing federal, state, and regional funding for new transportation improvements. And on July 7th, '98, the mayor of Los Angeles appointed Frankie as the interim general manager of the Department of Transportation. And she was obviously later appointed as the permanent manager. And she has been responsible for dealing with approximately 2,000 employees responsible for the operations of the city's ground and transportation system. The general manager was the first woman, Frankie as general manager was the first woman to hold that position, directed the activities of the Office of Transportation Programs, Operations, Parking Management, organizational support, responsible for design, development of all new projects, field and systems operations for the city's extensive transportation high-tech traffic signal program, or AFIS as you may know of it. Transportation review for all development of operation of an extensive network of commuter express and community transit, serving 26 areas of the city management on all on-street parking programs, off-street parking facilities, intersections, control, school crossings, guards, et cetera. I'm not gonna go on with all this, but I think most of you, if you've been listening are getting an idea of the vast extent of her involvement in the things that are important to this city. I think probably two of the most critical things that we have as a city in dealing with our infrastructure are our planning and transportation improvements. And obviously, with the tremendous growth that's taken place in the region, and it goes way beyond the city of Los Angeles, the problems have been innumerable in dealing with congestion. But Frankie has exhibited tremendous leadership. She has great wealth of knowledge which is gonna be severely missed when she leaves our city. So, this opportunity, I want to thank Frankie for the great service she's given our city. I want to express my regrets because we're losing her, but I also want to wish her the best in her retirement and hope that she'll always feel that this is her home if she ever needs us for anything. And Frankie, it's my mixed pleasure to present this to you, okay? Very good.
There are several council members wishing to also make a few remarks. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, Frankie and I started here around the same time in terms of me being the councilmember, her being the general manager. I know she has a long career with us, but I can't speak more highly of someone who worked so hard for us in the community. We had some major fatalities in my district in the first few months that I was a councilmember, and Frankie went out with us and saw the families, saw the community, felt the pain that the community shared with us, and worked on some solutions, and we're still working on some areas, but I want to tell you thank you for caring for our residents in CD-14.
Anybody else?
Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too am going to very, very much miss Frankie. I think what she has done with that department and the evolution, almost the revolution in that department, has been amazing. I, like Mr. Burnson, go back when this used to be the Department of Traffic, and it has been elevated as a Department of Transportation. I dare say it's been elevated almost on equal footing to the Department of Planning, and some of the most innovative planning that is being done in the city is being done by the Department of Transportation under Frankie's leadership. And way before, we had neighborhood councils, and way before we had a charter requiring neighborhood councils, we had in the Department of Transportation a division of neighborhood traffic management, neighborhood calming, neighborhood traffic solving issues. And this department has led the way in a number of areas, is clearly in the forefront, that's what people are talking about today, traffic, traffic, traffic. But this department has been innovative under your leadership, moving in that direction, never satisfied with where you are, considering new ideas, open to new ideas, and I just commend you and the department for that revolutionary change in that department to put you right up there in the best of categories of what is going on in the city in terms of solving the greater regional needs, but not forgetting what it's all about at the local neighborhood level. So, thank you for your service.
Anybody else?
Mr. Lavange.
Sure. Mr. President, Mr. Burnson, thank you. Frankie, congratulations. Well, the wonderful thing about Frankie is she came from right here. She came from this chamber, from this legislative office, Mr. Deaton, Mr. McCarty, others, but she rose the ranks to be the head of the Department of Transportation for the city of Los Angeles, which is a wonderful compliment to your management skills, your ability to bring people together. And what is so great that you were the general manager of this department, you had that relationships with all the other departments. I see the captain of police behind you, I know Mr. Burnson's gonna introduce in a moment, but your ability to work with other departments, your ability to work with water and power to make more efficient lights at the trilights at every intersection in the city, your ability to work with the fire department when they have an emergency in the street and your people come out in the middle of the night to relieve police officers to make sure this traffic is safe in an area and the alternate route is done. I'm just very proud of you Frankie. I'm proud of you because you had such love for working for the public, working for the people, and being able to bring people together as the Department of Transportation has evolved. When Councilmember Miss Sikowski spoke about the old Department of Traffic and SS Sam Taylor and all the tough fight that he would have, we think we have fights with general managers now, Sam Taylor was a, rest his soul, I don't want to say anything more, but you know how to bring people together, which is so important, which is so key to be successful in the neighborhood traffic calming, which is so important. And I'm just so pleased that recently you were able to put traffic officers back in the street directing traffic at high-impact streets on Ventura Boulevard and other areas to help all of Los Angeles who want to see that more. So, I just want to wish you well and great many, many years of good future and all your endeavors, and thank you for all the things you've done for me personally and for the people in the fourth district.
Thank you. We have Captain Roper here from the LAPD who would also like to present Frankie with a resume.
Mr. Burnson, before we do that, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Somebody else wants to talk.
Mr. Ridley Thomas passes to the man with the badge.
Ridley Thomas is passing up an opportunity to talk?
I'll be brief now, sir. I'm Captain Charles Roper, I'm representing Chief Parks who gives his sincere apologies for not being to be here today. As Councilman Lavange mentioned, the police department works closely with your department. In fact, if there's an unusual occurrence, a planned event, or whatever, you'll see police officers and you'll see DOT. And I can speak personally for my department, having been involved in special events planning since 1994, that our relationship has never been better, never been closer, never been more professional, and it's indicative of your leadership, your leadership style, and your personality, that the professionalism and the lawn of your organization has been outstanding. And we need to mention that we had a tremendous last few years. We've had the DNC, we've had two Laker parades, we've had the LA Marathon on an annual basis, the Kingdom Day Parade, and other events, and through it all, we have worked together and have persevered and have made this city a better and safer place, and we'd like to thank you very much. And I know that I'm going to miss you, and I know the department will as well. And I forgot also, Ms. Banerjee also sits on the Emergency Operations Board and has been a very critical member of our emergency processes following September 11th. And again, we wish you, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is a little bit of a sad day for us because we're losing a very special city member, one that it's been my pleasure to work with through the years, and that she is going to be leaving. And I normally don't read the resolutions, but Frankie has been involved in so many things with our city up until finally capping it with the head of the Transportation Department, DOT. But I'm gonna read these because I think for those of you that haven't been here through the years and aren't as old as I am, and nobody's as old as I am except for Nate, I am gonna do that. "Whereas we take exceptional pleasure in congratulating Frances Teresa," I wouldn't know that, Banerjee on her retirement from the city of Los Angeles after almost 25 years of distinguished service. Frances T. Banerjee began a professional career as a research associate in the Urban Transportation Systems Laboratory at Massachusetts Institute of Technology, our president's old alma mater, right? "From October of 1973 to January of '76, she took the position of Senior Transportation Planner with the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG as we know it. Frankie moved on to becoming a planning manager for the Los Angeles Community Development Agency from January of '76 to 1978, overseeing the Los Angeles Downtown People Mover Program. From October '78 to June '83, she provided consulting services to the United States Department of Transportation through contracts with the MIT institution in Massachusetts. Frankie managed several regional transportation programs as strategic planning manager for the Southern California Association of Governments. She served as transportation manager for the City of Los Angeles Community Redevelopment Agency for four-year period. In 1987, she joined the Office of Chief Legislative Analyst and was promoted to the position of Assistant Chief Legislative Analyst in February 1988. Whereas from March '94 to July of '98, she served as Assistant General Manager for the City of Los Angeles Department of Transportation. She was responsible for land use and transportation planning, commuting, community service, transit services, securing federal, state, and regional funding for new transportation improvements. And on July 7th, '98, the mayor of Los Angeles appointed Frankie as the interim general manager of the Department of Transportation. And she was obviously later appointed as the permanent manager, and she has been responsible for dealing with approximately 2,000 employees responsible for the operations of the city's ground and transportation system. The general manager was the first woman, Frankie as general manager was the first woman to hold that position, directed the activities of the Office of Transportation Programs, Operations, Parking Management, organizational support, responsible for design, development of all new projects, field and systems operations for the city's extensive transportation high-tech traffic signal program, or AFIS as you may know of it. Transportation review for all development of operation of an extensive network of commuter express and community transit, serving 26 areas of the city management on all on-street parking programs, off-street parking facilities, intersections, control, school crossings, guards, et cetera." I'm not gonna go on with all this, but I think most of you, if you've been listening are getting an idea of the vast extent of her involvement in the things that are important to this city. I think probably two of the most critical things that we have as a city in dealing with our infrastructure are our planning and transportation improvements. And obviously, with the tremendous growth that's taken place in the region, and it goes way beyond the city of Los Angeles, the problems have been innumerable in dealing with congestion. But Frankie has exhibited tremendous leadership. She has great wealth of knowledge which is gonna be severely missed when she leaves our city. So, at this opportunity, I want to thank Frankie for the great service she's given our city. I want to express my regrets because we're losing her, but I also want to wish her the best in her retirement and hope that she'll always feel that this is her home if she ever needs us for anything. And Frankie, it's my mixed pleasure to present this to you, okay? Very good.
I think some of the others may want to say something. There are several council members wishing to also make a few remarks. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, Frankie and I started here around the same time in terms of me being the councilmember, her being the general manager. I know she has a long career with us, but I can't speak more highly of someone who worked so hard for us in the community. We had some major fatalities in my district in the first few months that I was a councilmember, and Frankie went out with us and saw the families, saw the community, felt the pain that the community shared with us, and worked on some solutions, and we're still working on some areas, but I want to tell you thank you for caring for our residents in CD-14.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too am going to very, very much miss Frankie. I think what she has done with that department and the evolution, almost the revolution in that department, has been amazing. I, like Mr. Burnson, go back when this was, used to be the Department of Traffic, and it has been elevated as a Department of Transportation. I dare say it's been elevated almost on equal footing to the Department of Planning, and some of the most innovative planning that is being done in the city is being done by the Department of Transportation under Frankie's leadership. And way before, we had neighborhood councils, and way before we had a charter requiring neighborhood councils, we had in the Department of Transportation a division of neighborhood traffic management, neighborhood calming, neighborhood traffic solving issues. And this department has led the way in a number of areas, is clearly in the forefront, that's what people are talking about today, traffic, traffic, traffic. But this department has been innovative under your leadership, moving in that direction, never satisfied with where you are, considering new ideas, open to new ideas, and I just commend you and the department for that revolutionary change in that department to put you right up there in the best of categories of what is going on in the city in terms of solving the greater regional needs, but not forgetting what it's all about at the local neighborhood level. So, thank you for your service.
Anybody else?
Mr. Lavange.
Sure. Mr. President, Mr. Burnson, thank you. Frankie, congratulations. Well, the wonderful thing about Frankie is she came from right here. She came from this chamber, from this legislative office, Mr. Deaton, Mr. McCarty, others, but she rose the ranks to be the head of the Department of Transportation for the city of Los Angeles, which is a wonderful compliment to your management skills, your ability to bring people together. And what is so great that you were the general manager of this department, you had that relationships with all the other departments. I see the captain of police behind you, I know Mr. Burnson's gonna introduce in a moment, but your ability to work with other departments, your ability to work with water and power to make more efficient lights at the trilights at every intersection in the city, your ability to work with the fire department when they have an emergency in the street and your people come out in the middle of the night to relieve police officers to make sure this traffic is safe in an area and the alternate route is done. I'm just very proud of you Frankie. I'm proud of you because you had such love for working for the public, working for the people, and being able to bring people together as the Department of Transportation has evolved. When Councilmember Miss Sikowski spoke about the old Department of Traffic and SS Sam Taylor and all the tough fight that he would have, we think we have fights with general managers now, Sam Taylor was a, rest his soul, I don't want to say anything more, but you know how to bring people together, which is so important, which is so key to be successful in the neighborhood traffic calming, which is so important. And I'm just so pleased that recently you were able to put traffic officers back in the street directing traffic at high-impact streets on Ventura Boulevard and other areas to help all of Los Angeles who want to see that more. So, I just want to wish you well and great many, many years of good future in all your endeavors, and thank you for all the things you've done for me personally and for the people in the fourth district.
Thank you. We have Captain Roper here from the LAPD who would also like to present Frankie with a resume.
Mr. Burnson, before we do that, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Ridley Thomas passes to the man with the badge.
Ridley Thomas is passing up an opportunity to talk?
I'll be brief now, sir. I'm Captain Charles Roper, I'm representing Chief Parks who gives his sincere apologies for not being to be here today. As Councilman Lavange mentioned, the police department works closely with your department. In fact, if there's an unusual occurrence, a planned event, or whatever, you'll see police officers and you'll see DOT. And I can speak personally for my department, having been involved in special events planning since 1994, that our relationship has never been better, never been closer, never been more professional, and it's indicative of your leadership, your leadership style, and your personality, that the professionalism and the lawn of your organization has been outstanding. And we need to mention that we had a tremendous last few years. We've had the DNC, we've had two Laker parades, we've had the LA Marathon on an annual basis, the Kingdom Day Parade, and other events, and through it all, we have worked together and have persevered and have made this city a better and safer place, and we'd like to thank you very much. And I know that I'm going to miss you, and I know the department will as well. And I forgot also, Ms. Banerjee also sits on the Emergency Operations Board and has been a very critical member of our emergency processes following September 11th. And again, we wish you, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, Mr. Burnson, members of the council, I simply rise to acknowledge the dedication of Frances Banerjee. When I arrived a little better than 10 years ago, she was one of the first staff members that I met. She provided an exemplary briefing on the area for which she was responsible then, a decade ago, and our relationship has endured since that time. I think it's fair to characterize her as enlightened, as inspired, as dedicated, as I said, as committed, and passionate about her work. Not only that, I've come to appreciate her as being thoughtful, considerate, and compassionate. These are characteristics that I think embody or reflect who Frances Banerjee is and it's expressed further, and her family, who I've had the opportunity to meet, so she's a full person with a social self that is a professional, of high order, and a person who has committed herself in her personal life in an exemplary way as well. So, Frances, we will miss you, we hold you in high esteem, and wish you Godspeed.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. And if I may, Frankie, thank you for all you've done. I've only been around two and a half, working out three years now, but whether it's your help in responding to, you know, some of the tragedies and incidents in my own district, getting those smart crosswalks up in record time, even with all the sometimes bureaucracies and long timelines of testing and studies and things of that nature, but to some of the major things as well, from the DNC where we worked together, and even post-September 11th, I think people don't recognize exactly what your role was there. We saw a lot of police on television post-September 11th, we saw a lot of firefighters on television post-September 11th.
All on-street parking programs, off-street parking facilities, intersections, control, school crossings, guards, et cetera. I'm not going to go on with all this, but I think most of you, if you've been listening or getting an idea of the vast extent of her involvement in the things that are important to this city. I think probably two of the most critical things that we have as a city in dealing with our infrastructure are our planning and transportation improvements. And obviously, with the tremendous growth that's taken place in the region, and it goes way beyond the city of Los Angeles, the problems have been innumerable in dealing with congestion. But Frankie has exhibited tremendous leadership. She has great wealth of knowledge which is going to be severely missed when she leaves our city. So, at this opportunity, I want to thank Frankie for the great service she's given our city. I want to express my regrets because we're losing her, but I also want to wish her the best in her retirement and hope that she'll always feel that this is her home if she ever needs us for anything. And Frankie, it's my mixed pleasure to present this to you, okay? Very good.
I think some of the others may want to say something.
There are several council members wishing to also make a few remarks. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, Frankie and I started here around the same time in terms of me being the council member, her being the general manager. I know she has a long career with us, but I can't speak more highly of someone who works so hard for us in the community. We had some major fatalities in my district in the first few months that I was a council member, and Frankie went out with us and saw the families, saw the community, felt the pain that the community shared with us, and worked on some solutions, and we're still working on some areas. But I want to tell you, thank you for caring for our residents in CD-14.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Ms. Miskowski.
Cindy. Thank you, Mr. President. I too am going to very, very much miss Frankie. I think what she has done with that department and the evolution, almost the revolution in that department, has been amazing. I, like Mr. Berensen, go back when this was, used to be the Department of Traffic, and it has been elevated as a Department of Transportation. I dare say it's been elevated almost on equal footing to the Department of Planning, and some of the most innovative planning that is being done in the city is being done by the Department of Transportation under Frankie's leadership. And way before, we had neighborhood councils, and way before we had a charter requiring neighborhood councils, we had in the Department of Transportation a division of Neighborhood Traffic Management, Neighborhood Calming, Neighborhood Traffic Solving Issues. And this department has led the way in a number of areas, is clearly in the forefront, that's what people are talking about today, traffic, traffic, traffic. But this department has been innovative under your leadership, moving in that direction, never satisfied with where you are, considering new ideas, open to new ideas, and I just commend you and the department for that revolutionary change in that department, to put you right up there in the best of categories of what is going on in the city in terms of solving the greater regional needs, but not forgetting what it's all about at the local neighborhood level. So, thank you for your service.
Anybody else?
Mr. Labonge.
Sure. Mr. President, Mr. Berensen, thank you. Frankie, congratulations. Well, the wonderful thing about Frankie is she came from right here. She came from this chamber, from this legislative office, Mr. Deaton, Mr. McCarty, others, but she rose the ranks to be the head of the Department of Transportation for the city of Los Angeles, which is a wonderful compliment to your management skills, your ability to bring people together. And what is so great that you were the general manager of this department, you had that relationships with all the other departments. I see the captain of police behind you, I know Mr. Berensen's going to introduce in a moment, but your ability to work with other departments, your ability to work with water and power, to make more efficient lights at the trilights at every intersection in the city, your ability to work with the fire department when they have an emergency in the street, and your people come out in the middle of the night to relieve police officers to make sure this traffic is safe in an area and the alternate route is done. I'm just very proud of you, Frankie. I'm proud of you because you had such love for working for the public, working for the people, and being able to bring people together as the Department of Transportation has evolved. When Councilmember Ms. Miskowski spoke about the old Department of Traffic and SS Sam Taylor and all the tough fight that he would have, we think we have fights with general managers now, Sam Taylor was a, rest his soul, I don't want to say anything more, but you know how to bring people together, which is so important, which is so key to be successful in the Neighborhood Traffic Calming, which is so important. And I'm just so pleased that recently you were able to put traffic officers back in the street directing traffic at high-impact streets on Ventura Boulevard and other areas to help all of Los Angeles who want to see that more. So, I just want to wish you well and great many, many years of good future in all your endeavors, and thank you for all the things you've done for me personally and for the people in the 4th District.
Thank you. We have Captain Roper here from the LAPD who would also like to present Frankie with a reso.
Mr. Berensen, before we do that, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Ridley Thomas passes to the man with the badge.
Ridley Thomas is passing up an opportunity to talk?
I'll be brief now, sir. I'm Captain Charles Roper, I'm representing Chief Parks who gives his sincere apologies for not being to be here today. As Councilman Labonge mentioned, the Police Department works closely with your department. In fact, if there's an unusual occurrence, a planned event, or whatever, you'll see police officers and you'll see DOT. And I can speak personally for my department, having been involved in special events planning since 1994, that our relationship has never been better, never been closer, never been more professional, and it's indicative of your leadership, your leadership style, and your personality, that the professionalism and elan of your organization has been outstanding. And we need to mention that we had a tremendous last few years. We've had the DNC, we've had two Laker parades, we've had the LA Marathon on an annual basis, the Kingdom Day Parade, and other events, and through it all, we have worked together and have persevered and have made this city a better and safer place, and we'd like to thank you very much. And I know that I'm going to miss you, and I know the department will as well. And I forgot also, Ms. Banerji also sits on the Emergency Operations Board and has been a very critical member of our emergency processes following September 11th. And again, we wish to thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Now, Ridley?
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, Mr. Berensen, members of the council, I simply rise to acknowledge the dedication of Frances Banerji. When I arrived a little better than 10 years ago, she was one of the first staff members that I met. She provided an exemplary briefing on the area for which she was responsible then, a decade ago, and our relationship has endured since that time. I think it's fair to characterize her as enlightened, as inspired, as dedicated, as I said, as committed, and passionate about her work. Not only that, I've come to appreciate her as being thoughtful, considerate, and compassionate. These are characteristics that I think embody or reflect who Frances Banerji is, and it's expressed further, and her family, who I've had the opportunity to meet, so she's a full person with a social self that is a professional, of high order, and a person who has committed herself in her personal life in an exemplary way as well. So, Frances, we will miss you, we hold you in high esteem, and wish you Godspeed.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas, and if I may, Frankie, thank you for all you've done. I've only been around two and a half, working out three years now, but whether it's your help in responding to, you know, some of the tragedies and incidents in my own district, getting those smart crosswalks up in record time, even with all the sometimes bureaucracies and long timelines of testing and studies and things of that nature, but to some of the major things as well, from the DNC where we worked together, and even post-September 11th. I think people don't recognize exactly what your role was there. We saw a lot of police on television post-September 11th, we saw a lot of firefighters on television post-September 11th, but the unique design of our airport here in Los Angeles has the Pulvera Boulevard running underneath one of the freeways, and ensuring safety and security of our airport and its surrounding facilities required a big amount of work and effort on your part and that of the entire department. So, it hasn't gone unnoticed, certainly significant tasks in your vision to the occasion, and we thank you for all your work. Mr. Holden.
Oh, no, not Nate.
Got that right. Frances, I knew you when you worked for the CLA, is that correct?
That's correct.
And when you went over to the Department of Transportation, we had a good relationship as a start, right?
Still do.
Well, that's nice. And we had a lot of bumpy roads along the way, you know, the transportation and contracts, and the list goes on. But the fact of the matter is that you have a nice son, and I gave him a baseball once, and I gave him some things, events to go to, and that's what kept us close together. And now you're leaving, and with all your experience, you're taking it with you, and that's the trouble with term limits, even with general managers and department heads, that we can't keep them around long enough to share with some of my colleagues and others that which they've learned and that which my colleagues need to know in order to carry on a tradition of good service for the city of Los Angeles. You look much too young to retire, so I'm sure you have another career planned, and if you do, good luck, best wishes, and I'm sure you will accomplish it and achieve the best success.
You didn't expect that, did you?
Yes, I did.
Now, it's your turn.
Councilmembers, thank you so very much. You know, we hear about the city family, and that term is referred to from time to time, I know you've all heard it. I am living proof how valuable and wonderful and supportive that family is. Some of you, from my very, very first days coming up here, have just really been so very, very helpful. There isn't a problem that can't be solved, there isn't an approach that can't be taken, there isn't an area that we can't do better and learn more, and particularly as a team. We have worked very, very hard, but we've also, thank God, been able to enjoy each other and actually laugh and reflect and celebrate, and that's been an incredible rewarding experience. I'd like to just tell you, because I do feel the department carries out one of the most important functions in the city, I'm a little parochial here, but I think it's true, that the department is in good hands. It's a solid department, it's a strong performing department, and maybe what some of you can't see, but I see day-to-day, is the people coming up the ranks. The seniors and the mid-level staff are as good as they possibly can be, they are absolutely exceptional, and so the prognosis for the future is very good. I'm very proud of them, and I know you will be, and there's a lot more to come. I would like to thank you for the best career that anyone could ever have. I am still in the Southern California area. I told the president council, if you ever need me, I'm a phone call away, and that's open to all of you, I'd help you however I could. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Good friend, good lady.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berensen. I do believe we've achieved a quorum at this time. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Berensen, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Labonge, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Vice-Signing Padilla, 11 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Members, before continuing with presentations, we do have a brief formal agenda today, unless there's an objection, the proposal is to zip through the official business of the day and then return to presentations. We also have a special meeting agenda, which is posted for 11:15, so at 11:15, we can take up the matter of the special meeting. Mr. Clerk, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Ridley Thomas moves, and Mr. Labonge seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Pacheco moves, and Mr. Berensen seconds.
Before starting the regular agenda, item number 15, a request from the city attorney that that closed session matter be continued until March 6th.
Members, item 15, request to be continued without objection. So ordered.
On the regular agenda, items numbers one through five are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items one through five before us, members wishing to call any specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please, two calls special by Mr. Labonge. Any other specials?
Five special.
Five special by Mr. Holden. Any other specials? Seeing none, we have one, three, and four before us. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items numbers six through 14 on the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have not been held.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on these items. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials? Mr. Pacheco. 14? 14 calls special by Mr. Pacheco. Any others? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on items six through 13. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Fourth with an 11. Okay, members, shall we return to presentations and take the special items later on, or should we work through the special items and return to presentations later? Let's go back to presentations, we do have special guests with us. Mr. Clerk, let's return to the presentations portion of our meeting.
Mr. President, members of the council, you'll appreciate this very special presentation, and I would just ask for your attention. I'm pleased to bring forward one of the newer nonprofit organizations in our city, namely Team Parkinson. Team Parkinson began in 1999 when its co-founder, Mary Yost, applied to be one of the official charities for the Los Angeles Marathon. That means Team Parkinson was able to raise for research on Parkinson's disease since 1999 some $100,000. And during the LA Marathon this March, Team Parkinson is attempting to raise another $100,000 for this important research endeavor. You will wish to know that more than a million people in America have been diagnosed with Parkinson's disease. They range from their 20s to their 80s and cover all socioeconomic levels, but their common experience is that they all suffer from the progressive neurological disorder that we know as Parkinson's disease. And so today, I want to recognize Team Parkinson for their efforts to help raise money for research and to help raise awareness about this disease. And I guess I'd have to say, Mr. President, members of the council, that it was about 30 years ago that I met one of the persons who's a part of Team Parkinson as one of the members, was a teacher of mine at Manual Arts High School. And Aaron Maresky, who prognosticated or prophesied, depending on your political perspective, that I would either be a politician or a minister, is here today, and I'd like you to give him a big round of applause. Raise your hand, Aaron. He was my American history teacher at Manual Arts High School. And I also want to acknowledge Edna Ball, the present chair of Team Parkinson, and her husband, Alan Ball. Give them a big round of applause, will you? Of course, Mary Yost, the co-founder of Team Parkinson, who I mentioned earlier, and finally, Dana Schneider, a member of Team Parkinson. And members of the council, you will want to know that Meeme Ali, the daughter of the great Muhammad Ali, whom we all know has courageously tried to help understand and help others to understand the effects of Parkinson's disease. We thank you for being here, Ms. Ali. I thank all of you for being here, and I would now like to present this resolution in honor of Team Parkinson, an official charity of the Los Angeles Marathon, whose main goal is to try to raise money to fund research to find a cure for Parkinson's disease. And we want to say to them, thank you very much for your commitment and dedication, and best wishes to you as you pursue this great work as a part of the LA Marathon 2002.
All right. And you may come forward and have words, who's going to speak? We're going to get a picture right here, all right? Come around, and then we'll get another in the back. Who's going to speak, Aaron? Are you going to speak? Please.
Thank you very much, Mark. It's been a privilege to serve this organization. We have a goal that this disease will be conquered, and with the help of the people who have been so generous in donating towards that cause, we are greatly appreciative. And thank you for recognizing our attempt to bring to the public the need for this kind of support. And Mark, we wish you the very, very best, and thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Follow her, and we're going to take a picture in the back.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Thank you so much. And Lynn and Ron. Good, Ron, good. Lynn, good to see you, thank you so much. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. Today, we have some very special people with us today. As you know, the city of Los Angeles has constantly been very involved with the March of Dimes program, as you know, for many years, and we just honored Frankie Banerji. I remember when she was with the Legislative Analyst Office, they were the driving force to make the city of Los Angeles the number-one team for the March of Dimes. Well, as you know, it's coming up later on in April with the Walk America, but just recently, in the San Fernando Valley, there was a great program in Woodland Hills area for honoring all the people in the San Fernando Valley chapter of the March of Dimes. And first and foremost, I want to ask Ron Silverman, the executive director, just to say a few words, and then I want to introduce the honorees.
Thank you, Tom. Hi, everybody. It's my pleasure to be here today, and I'm very, very proud to be representing the March of Dimes, and I am very proud to be here on behalf of the honorees that we are saying thank you to today. Without the help of these couples, we would not be able to have the innovative research that we have and the life-preventing research that we do. For 63 years, the March of Dimes has been on hand to ensure that every baby in this country is born healthy, and I want to thank the honorees for making that possible. I want to thank the council for honoring them today.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate that, Ron. And also Lynn Capri, you're right here representing March of Dimes as well, it's good to see you. But that evening that they had in celebration of people who have done something special to help the March of Dimes, and Helen and Fred Huxville, would you please come forth here? I know Helen is not here this morning, but Fred, on behalf of the council, we want to salute you with this commendation for what you've done for the March of Dimes, of being an outstanding volunteer, of raising the bar higher, and doing special things to help children and babies.
Thank you.
Thank you, here we go. Got it right there. And Suzanne and Victor Sampson, congratulations, you look fabulous.
Thank you.
Okay. We want to salute you on behalf of the council for your work with the March of Dimes, for being outstanding volunteers and making a difference in the lives of many.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Get up here. Come up here. Good job, there you go. Thank you. And Rachel and James Garrison, good to see you both. Congratulations, and thank you for being so special.
Thank you.
And I could say this about each and every one of you, for what you've done as parents and as concerned members of March of Dimes, but I have someone here who I know has been a driving force into helping March of Dimes. Several years ago, I met them, and they were, had a tragedy in their life, they lost their baby. Their baby was born and it died two weeks after it was born, but it was born with a debilitating disease that would not make them able to ever play in a playground, to ever play in a park. With that tragic loss, they thought, what could they do to make a difference for others? And they formed together an effort and a foundation and gathered with friends, and we met on a hot, hot day in a rock out in Griffith Park near the ranger station, and found the location for what is to be the greatest playground in the city, Shades Inspiration. It was Shane, who is in heaven, but who left a great legacy, but Scott and Catherine Curry-Williams were the parents that drove that effort to create a playground that had no boundaries and had no obstacles, so that anyone, whether they're in a wheelchair, whether they have trouble walking, could experience what we want all healthy children and babies to experience as what the March of Dimes goal is. And I know you were honored, as were all, so it's my great honor today to have Catherine here and to honor you for what you've done and what you hope to do in other parts of the city with the magnificent program for a Shades Inspiration-style playground for children. So, congratulations to you and your husband.
Thank you so much.
You betcha. You want to say a few words? I'm going to ask Catherine to say a few words.
Thank you so much, and thank you, the city of Los Angeles. We're currently building a playground with, in Council Padilla's district, at the Pacoima Hansedan site, and we're very excited about it. And Ruth Galanter's site was just opened on December 5th, called Aiden's Place in memory of another little boy. We're just so honored to continue with, working with the city, private-public partnership to make this incredible dream come true for all children. Thank you all, thank you so much, Tom, for being our support, the wings beneath, the wind beneath our wings, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to all of you for the March of Dimes. Let's give them a big hand. We'll take some pictures in back, we'll sit down right here for right now. And also, Mr. President, last week, you were standing right here, and you had our great city engineer and all the staff to kick off the start of National Civil Engineering Week. Well, during the Great Rose Parade, where the city of Los Angeles had a beautiful float thanks to the Department of Water and Power, someone else had a great float, and it was also the engineers for the American Society of Civil Engineers. And I just thought it was appropriate to book in Engineering Week and to salute them. Their float was beautiful, it had some of the greatest monuments in this country, greatest monuments in this state, and it was very exciting to see all of that together on a float celebrating what engineers do. So, I wanted to again salute them, and also call Charles Redell, who's the vice president of the American Society of Civil Engineers, Edgar Dombley, who's with our own Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, and Paul Taylor, who's the director, who's joining me here to salute them at this time. And I'd like to call on Charles to say a few words before I make the presentation.
Thank you, Councilman, and President Padilla, who I understand is also an engineer. And council members, I thank you very much for this proclamation and recognition of Engineers Week, which is always the week of George Washington's birthday, and on behalf of the 6,500 members in the Los Angeles section and over 120,000 members nationwide for helping us celebrate ASCE's 150th anniversary. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I asked them before they came in for this commendation to give us the top 10 civil engineering projects in our region, and it would be nice to know in their opinion, Water and Power, and I know Green Power's here in formation this morning, but we'd like to know that number one was the Los Angeles Owens River Aqueduct. Number two, the councilman of the 14th District will be happy about this, the Arroyo Seaco Parkway. Number three, Jan Perry will be very happy about this, the great Los Angeles City Highway.
And I just want to include that the San Fernando Valley appreciates what they have done for the community of the San Fernando Valley, because you did exclude that from your presentation.
No, I didn't. Number five, it's the Los Angeles River, and as you would know of, because you're such a good councilman, the Los Angeles River starts in the great 3rd district at the Bell and Calabasas Creek behind Cano.
I knew you would mention that. Thank you. And thank you, Water and Power folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Chair recognizes -- who's next here? Mr. Wex for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning. I am very pleased to present to you the inimitable Sandra Farrington-Domingue, one of our great, great city employees. And it is very fitting that we're honoring her today. Let me tell you all a little bit about her. Sandra was raised in a rural area west of Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and I mention that to all of you because, while this is a family channel, Channel 35, she learned some expressions there in Louisiana, which she has shared with some people over the years in the city family, which have been very, very valuable additions to their lexicon. She went on to earn her J.D. degree from Kentington University, a bachelor's degree in law from Glendale College School of Law, and a bachelor's degree in construction management from Cal State LA. And she settled in LA in the late 60s and accepted a job with the city of Los Angeles as a building mechanical inspector. Little did she know that 27 and a half years later, she would still be with the city and be such a treasured and honored member of the city, of the city family. She has helped so many people in not only the 5th district, in not only my field offices, but in every district in this city. And she has worked so well with so many council staff throughout this city for so many years. She has just done an extraordinary job for the people of this city. She's also been a very active civic booster. She's participated in many organizations. Let me just tell you a few of them. The Stonewall Democratic Club, the Black Women's Forum, the L.A. County Human Relations Commission's Network Against Hate Crimes, the L.A. Association of Black Personnel. And she has served as the -- in the past, as a co-chair of the L.A. Gay and Lesbian Police Advisory Task Force and the L.A. City Gay and Lesbian United Employees. She's also a former member of the Board of Directors of AIDS Project Los Angeles. She is an extraordinary city employee. I want to thank her for her service to the city of Los Angeles and wish her all the best in the future. Sandra Farrington-Domingue. Is Mr. Eight? Yes. Running to the podium, we have Mr. Andrew Edelman.
Before Andrew.
Good morning. I was serving under one of my favorite council members. We are here, and I'm joined with many of my colleagues in the Department of Building and Safety to celebrate 27 and a half years of service by Sandra Farrington-Domingue to the Department of Building and Safety, and prior to that, a few years in the county, altogether 31 years. And we want to wish Sandra, her companion Stephanie, and her daughter Shanna the best of retirement and happiest time and long, long life, so she can enjoy that pension for many, many years. And again, as you see, she's a very popular -- I'm joined by many of my colleagues in building and safety here. With that, Sandra.
Mr. Garcetti.
I'd also like to just say a quick word. I know that Sandra has been such a help to so many people in the 13th district, worked out of the 13th district office for a time, building and safety, is very well respected and loved in the community. I had the good fortune of sharing a stage with her this past spring when we ran both for the 13th council district, and it was an honor to get to know you. Congratulations. I wish you the best in retirement, and we will miss you down here at City Hall. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. President, honorable councilpersons, Councilman Jack Weiss, first of all, thank you and your staff for this lovely, big whereas document. Secondly, I would like to take the opportunity to thank the council for the changes that was made in the retirement system several years ago that has given me the opportunity to stand before you today. It wasn't an easy decision for me to make to retire. However, I do realize that it is time for me to go, to move on, and to do different things that I've wanted to do, some of them that I couldn't do as a city employee, and you guys better watch out, because I will no longer be a city employee, and I'm coming back, and I'll be loaded. 27 and a half years ago, when I got the word from the building department that I had been selected for the Assistant Inspector Program, I called my parents, who were still alive at the time, and I told my father, who was a lifetime construction person, he was a bricklayer in Louisiana, told him what my job would be. And he gave me two words of wisdom that I have tried to live by and work with for the last 27 and a half years. And the first word of wisdom was, never be afraid to go on a job and to put a blue mark if the work was not done correctly. The second thing that he told me was to always remember to help the people that needed the help, the people that didn't understand the system, the people that were most in need of my services and my help. And for 27 years, I want you guys to know that it has been an honor and a privilege for me to serve the people of the city of Los Angeles, and I am so proud, and it is with a pleasure, that I have worked for the greatest building department in the world. Thank you so much.
Hold on. Before we let you go, we have more council members wishing to speak. Mr. Holden.
Sandra told it like it is, and that's the way she's worked since she's been with the city for 27 years. Outreach program, even above and beyond the call of duty to help people. She didn't just say, no, that's a problem, you go find a way to fix it. She would show them how to fix that problem. That's what an outreach program is all about, and that's what good public servant is all about. And you're strong and got a lot of talent and ability left. I'm sure you're going to serve us in many areas not in years to come. We just hate to see you go. And as we passed a motion just yesterday, two couple days ago, to rehire those police officers who left us, those guys, thought the grass was greener on the other side of the street, they made it possible for them to come back. And if you ever decide that you want to come back and do some service for three months, six months, or whatever, just let us know. I'm sure they'll find a way to make that happen. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Sandra, I just wanted to say you've got an extraordinary personality. She's one of the most outgoing inspectors I've ever met. You know, you've definitely made your mark, and your not being here will be immediately apparent. You deserve to have a good time and to relax and enjoy your family and your retirement. And I, for one, will miss you and your wit. And I know you'll be not too far away, and I'm sure you'll be calling and making sure we're doing our jobs at least every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
President, members of council, Sandra, congratulations. Hard to believe 26 years fly so fast, but you're one of the first building inspectors that I met years ago. And all the work that you've done and all your devotion to other people and to the city and to the department. So I just want to congratulate you and wish you well on all your future endeavors, and thank you for all the things that you've done for the good of the people of Los Angeles.
of the Year, Susan Kent. I wonder if the camera can see this here. Come on, can you bring it in? Are you listening? Hello? Maybe not. This is the cover of Library Journal commemorating Susan Kent's being named the Librarian of the Year. It is an extraordinary honor for her, and it's an extraordinary honor for the city of Los Angeles that our librarian has been recognized as the Librarian of the Year, and she well deserves it. She has done so much for this city, and she's done so much for a library system that serves all of us, that serves the entire community. It is the largest population of any public library in the United States, a central library and 67 branch libraries. She won voter approval of a $178 million bond program, and since 1995, she has made sure that that bond program has been implemented, that we have been building new libraries, new branches throughout this city on budget and on time. She's achieved an extraordinary record in that regard. She's also doing something very creative by helping to bridge the digital divide throughout this city. That's one of her passions. It's something that we all share in this room, and she's been very successful in that regard as well. She has done an extraordinary job, and fortunately for us, unlike the case with Ms. Sandra Farrington-Domingue, Susan Kent is not going anywhere. We're keeping her in the city of Los Angeles, and we're grateful for it. So ladies and gentlemen, the Librarian of the Year, Susan Kent.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I also want to acknowledge the fine work you've done. I know that in my district, we've got libraries sprouting up in different regions, not only in the San Fernando Valley, but other parts of the city. You've done a tremendous job with that, and I would think that you'd be the perfect person to coordinate the next bond measure, Prop Q, to help the police facilities, because you're getting them on time, you're getting them within budget, and it's going to make the community much better. So I want to acknowledge you for all the fine work you've done. I know we were at the groundbreaking for the West Valley Library, and I know you're very diligent in that activity. So keep on pace. Congratulations on being named the Librarian of all librarians. I know you have a difficult time recruiting new librarians, because it doesn't seem to be a popular field anymore with the great information highway, but you are doing a tremendous job. I appreciate it. And think about that Prop Q. Maybe you can kind of like put some influence on that, because you have been very successful. Congratulations to you.
Mr. Labange.
No, no, no. Are you going to speak on this one? Go on up. We have other members waiting as well. I know. I would just be real quick. We're two-for-two. Vitron Tally, Vitron Troyon, is our city engineer of the year. Last week, we was in here. Now, our city librarian is the librarian of the year. So I just wanted to make a plug for Los Angeles, two-for-two across the country. Congratulations, Susan. Okay.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I rise simply to say that it is no small accomplishment to be designated Librarian of the Year. And I'd like to suggest that it is very important for a city of this size, of this sort, to have such a distinction with such a distinguished librarian. And I say that because -- I say it because Mr. Pacheco and Ms. Perry are both well-trained and fully literate people who use libraries with some regularity. You don't graduate from Boathall and from USC's Planning School without using the library. But as for the public library system, it is a critical component in causing Los Angeles to become an even greater city than it is. It is my own conviction that literacy is a fundament of democracy, and that can only be fully appreciated through recreational reading that a library affords, as well as the research opportunity it makes available. And now, with these technological innovations, Mr. President, members of the council, these libraries are important in the context of our communities to make communities what they can become in a more full sense. And so when we think about balancing our budget, when we think about those things that are important, it is my strong sense that libraries ought to be at the top of our list. And to the extent that that is the case, it is even more meaningful that you have been so honored, and by that, you honor us and a grateful city. Thank you, Susan.
Mr. President, I just wanted to point out that as a UCLA alum, I will take Mr. Ridley Thomas at his word when he says that USC students use the library.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Kent.
Mr. President, members of council, thank you so much for presenting me with this wonderful commendation. But I really would like to say one thing, which I believe strongly. I was honored with my picture on the cover, but what should have been on the cover were a picture of 1,000-plus staff members of the Los Angeles Public Library who do an excellent job every single day and have made this the leading library in the country. And two more thanks. I want to thank elected officials now and past who have supported the library with their hearts and with their pocketbooks, who have made it possible for us to expand our services, expand our hours, use new technologies, and provide the best services to the public. And most of all, thanks go to the people of the city of Los Angeles who expect and demand top-rate library services, and they give us the inspiration to do that. So thank you very much.
Mr. Labange, I think you had a library-related presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Knowing that Councilmember Weiss was going to honor our great librarian, we thought it would be appropriate, Jan Perry and I, to honor someone from the library who did something special for all of us in this building on the fourth floor with all the photography that has graced this great building that's been restored, which we will welcome more people to. So at this time, I'd like to call on Cecilia Riddle. If you could come on up, please. She's with the Central Library, and she is involved as a director of the Central Library. And also, I'd like to call Carolyn Cole, who is the keeper of all the great historic photographs of Los Angeles. And also call our very own Raymond Kwan. Give him a big hand. Photographer, get up here, Raymond.
Mr. President, Members of Council, thank you so much for presenting me with this wonderful commendation. But I really would like to say one thing which I believe strongly. I was honored with my picture on the cover, but what should have been on the cover were a picture of 1,000-plus staff members of the Los Angeles Public Library who do an excellent job every single day and have made this the leading library in the country. And two more thanks. I want to thank elected officials now and past who have supported the library with their hearts and with their pocketbooks, who have made it possible for us to expand our services, expand our hours, use new technologies, and provide the best services to the public. And most of all, thanks go to the people of the City of Los Angeles who expect and demand top-rate library services and they give us the inspiration to do that. So thank you very much.
Mr. Labange, I think you had a library-related presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of Council. Knowing that Councilmember Weiss was going to honor our great librarian, we thought it would be appropriate Jan Perry and I to honor someone from the library who did something special for all of us in this building on the fourth floor with all the photography that has graced this great building that's been restored, which we will welcome more people to. So at this time, I'd like to call on Cecilia Riddle. If you could come on up, please. She's with the Central Library and she is involved as a director of the Central Library. And also would like to call Carolyn Cole, who is the keeper of all the great historic photographs of Los Angeles. And also call our very own Raymond Kwan. Give him a big hand. Photographer, get up here, Raymond.
Mr. President, could you ask Mr. Labange just to manage his enthusiasm just a tad for the benefit of these city employees who are fragile? Thank you so much.
Well, they're not fragile. Mark, they're not fragile. It's the energy that Water &amp; Power brings us every day that keeps me doing it. Anyway, the great story here is first with the Director of the Central Library, which is the great institution there at Fifth and Flower that welcomes everybody. We thank you for that. And overseen by our great Susan Goldberg-Kent as our librarian. But Carolyn Cole, as a librarian years ago, received a shipment from the Security Pacific Bank, went out. All their photographs really depict Los Angeles, not as it is, but what one once thought it was. It was all white, angled, Saxon Protestant. And Carolyn Cole and other librarians, but Carolyn Cole drove the idea of Shades of L.A., where they went out to branch libraries throughout the system to create a better depiction of what really was Los Angeles. And people would bring their family albums in. And now we have a great collection of really what is the great diversity of Los Angeles, from Chatsworth to San Pedro, from Boyle Heights to Venice. But our very own Raymond Kwan, taking the initiative to dress up the fourth floor of City Hall, he worked over the Internet with Carolyn Cole to pick off those historic photographs and the stories behind them so that our building would better display the history of old Los Angeles. So Jan Perry and I wanted to salute you at the same time, your boss and the resource of your boss, Raymond, were honored here today. So congratulations to each and every one of you. And I'm going to ask you to say a few words after I have the great Councilmember of the Ninth District, Jan Perry, say a few words, the keeper of the Central Library and all good.
Well, it's always difficult to follow Tom Labange, but I'll try. I just want to thank all of the employees here today for helping us to understand our own personal stories and to share that with the entire City of Los Angeles. And I'm just glad we had the chance to give you the proper recognition that you so richly deserve. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. As Director of Central Library, I wanted to thank all of you for this recognition. We have an outstanding photograph collection as part of our resources of the Los Angeles Public Library. It's becoming more and more well-known and we hope we'll continue to do so. And we appreciate recognition of all of our staff's work in this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Riddle. Thank you so much, Ms. Cole.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you all of you, but particularly thanks to Tom because not only is he a fabulous Councilmember now, but he's also a first-rate photographer himself and has been documenting Los Angeles and sharing his pictures with the photo collection for decades. And we really appreciate Tom Labange's photographs in our collection. And before I leave, we have 2.5 million photographs. We have 32,000 online, but for those of you with your Council District numbers, all you have to do is put in for a keyword search, "Council District 4," and up will pop a good number of photographs that represent the history and the people of your community. And I want you all to know that. Thank you very much for this honor.
And now our very own Raymond Kwan. Get up here, Raymond. Come on. The man behind the lens.
Thank you.
Thank you, good. He was following the great lead of William Mahullen with the greatest speech. There it is, take it. All right, good job, Raymond. Thank you very much, Members of Council.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Ms. Perry for a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I am joined here today by Carol Schatz of the Central City Association, Randall Ely from the Downtown Center Business Improvement District, and Mr. Ellis Stanley, who's the General Manager of the Emergency Preparedness Department. And Ellis, why don't you join me up here? Mr. Stanley came to me a while ago to talk about ways the city could do more outreach and community organizing on the issue of emergency preparedness. So it's my pleasure today to share with you, some of the members of this community in the Ninth Council District who are dedicated to public safety of residents, business owners and workers from all over in downtown Los Angeles. Carol Schatz is the President of the Central City Association and the BID or the Business Improvement District. And then Randall Ely is the Chief Operating Officer of the BID. These people here assembled behind me are here today to affirm their commitment to maintaining the public safety for all people of Los Angeles. And one of their many examples, one example of their dedication to city emergency preparedness is the Purple Patrol. And I think you have some representatives here with us today, Carol. Thank you so much. The Purple Patrol is funded by the Downtown Center BID and has been extremely supportive of local emergency preparedness outreach efforts. They have worked very hard to develop comprehensive plans that encompass the broader community and share a commitment to enhance emergency preparedness at all levels of organization. This organization has the knowledge, the experience and the resources to provide a quick and effective response and recovery after any emergency at a grassroots level on the street directly to people who live, work and are in the City of Los Angeles downtown and are committed to promoting an open dialogue, to promoting information education on all phases of disaster preparedness, mitigation, response, recovery and reconstruction. Emergency preparedness is an essential component of safety and we must work very hard to preserve the well-being of our city. So this cooperation should be duly noted and is commendable. And I would like to present this resolution, which is a display of the agreement between the City of Los Angeles, to Carol Schatz, Randall Ely and Ellis Stanley for their commitment to the safety of the people of Los Angeles. And Ellis, if you'll just say a few words and then I'd like to ask Carol to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Council and especially Ms. Perry. This effort is to look at and recognize the partners and preparedness in this community. And we are very pleased to be able to work with the Downtown Improvement District and everybody in the city to make sure that we have a strong public-private partnership. And we commend the efforts of these individuals for being partners with us and changing the paradigm that we cannot work together. We are working together and we have an ongoing and physical linkage with the business community. And it is important and we thank them.
Good morning. The Downtown Center Business Improvement District represents over 440 property owners in the 65 square blocks of the core of downtown. We are delighted at this very effective public-private partnership. We're going in for our five-year renewal in the next couple of months. And we have been very pleased to join with the city and Mr. Stanley's department to help the downtown area meet any emergency. Key to this, I'd like to introduce our staff that really is the one that sits with Mr. Stanley in his department. Randall Ely, our Chief Operating Officer. Don McNeil, our Director of Operations. John Flores, our Director of Safety. And Ron Colcol, our Director of Sanitation. And Randy Tampa, who represents our contractor, who provides our Purple People. So working all together, we help keep downtown safe. And again, we appreciate the partnership we have with you all. Thank you very much.
Hold on, Ms. Perry. I believe Mr. Pacheco wishes to say a few words.
Mr. President, colleagues, I just wanted to commend the Downtown Center BID and the Department for working so closely together. And would encourage the Department also to work with our other bids in the downtown area so that we can have the whole area covered with this relationship and emergency preparedness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Members, it is now after 11:15. We still have a few presentations left, but we do have a special meeting agenda item that I believe we can dispense with rather quickly. Without objection, let recess the regular meeting. And Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Brynson Glanter-Garcetti, Han Holden Labange, Ms. Causi Pacheco, Perry Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Weiss, Zine and Padilla. Eleven Members present in the court. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And we do have a one-item special meeting agenda. We do not have requests from Members of the public to be heard on it. We shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to speak on special meeting agenda item number one. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Let us now adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting agenda. Chair recognizes next, Mr. Holden for a presentation.
Hello, how are you? Good to see you. Good to see you too. Wonderful, wonderful. Pablo, how are you? Good to see you. Mr. President, Members, colleagues, we have a person here, Cookie LaMell. She has a cultural understanding and something we talk about but often do not have the opportunity to practice. Today, I want to introduce you to an individual who has worked hard to promote cultural understanding and appreciation. She does this through a unique program she began in 1994. She brings young people together and has them live and work side by side. Before I introduce Cookie to you, who is the Executive Director of Operation Unity, I want to say that I was moved by her efforts when she came into my office and explained that this one organization which she heads went to Israel, worked in the kibbutz, gathered an understanding of the people who lived there and worked there. And the young people learned and brought back with them an experience that would carry them through the rest of their lives. She's a wonderful person, Cookie is, a great organization. Mr. President, Members, the Executive Director, Cookie LaMell.
I would like to thank Councilman Holden for recognizing Operation Unity and its work with the youth of Los Angeles. Also, I'd like to recognize Councilman Eric Garcetti, who's on our Advisory Board, and Councilwoman Jan Perry, who was one of our founding board members and also serves on our Advisory Board. We have taken young people to Israel to work on kibbutz since 1994 and they have constantly told me how much they have benefited from working with others on the diverse community on a kibbutz and the diversity of Israel. We're now going to launch a domestic version of our international program right here in Los Angeles. We'll do many of the same things that we do in Israel, but one very important thing, which is we will discover multicultural L.A. A lot of the teachers in the school districts where we take our students from constantly tell us that students work, sit next to each other, work next to each other and don't know one single thing about each other or their culture. And we are going to try to put a stop to that. And one of our partners in that effort will be the L.A. City Human Relations Commission, who has come on board to help fund what we're doing and to partner with us in parts of our program. I would like to introduce one of the young people who went with us on our last trip to Israel, where we took students from Council Holden's district, Council Pacheco's district, who interacted. And actually Pablo was the inspiration for this program when he told me one day how much he learned about the Korean community long away in Israel, where he's so close to one of the largest Korean communities outside of, out of Korea. Pablo.
Hello. My name is Pablo Ramos. I'm a high school graduate from Roosevelt High School in Boyle Heights. During my senior year in high school, I was actually invited by Operation Unity to go to Israel. You know, it's not an opportunity that many high school students in Roosevelt get, you know, presented. But I took the, I took the chance, went to Israel. Many things I've learned over there. I've actually learned a lot of things, how to work as a team member. I also realized, you know, it's kind of funny how Los Angeles is a very multicultural city, you know, all kinds of people live here in Los Angeles. And it took a trip halfway around the world to actually learn about different communities and different cultures, specifically with the Korean culture. A friend of mine in Israel, he happened to be there from, straight from Korea, didn't speak much English, but we learned how to communicate with each other. And it's funny how I had to just travel all the way to Israel to learn about the Korean culture when I could have just learned it here. So I really, really thank Operation Unity a lot because it's helped me a lot. It's actually helped me how to accept people for who they are, where they come from and what they believe in. Thank you.
Thank you, Pablo. I'm going to invite you to Koreatown, that's the community that I represent, and let you learn firsthand what we have here in the City of Los Angeles. And you're correct, that's Seoul away from Seoul. Seoul, Korea, and Seoul here, right here at home. I'm going to present the certificate to you right now of appreciation before I introduce Ms. Perry and Mr. Garcetti. All right? This is Executive Director applaud the work you have done with Operation Unity, which promotes harmony and understanding between diverse communities of Los Angeles. Your program that focuses on empowering teens and helping them understand and believe they can make a difference in their, their lives and others is worthy of high regard. So on behalf of the City Council, Fifth District and all, I present you the certificate of appreciation you most deserving.
I'd just like to say thank you very much to everybody on the City Council for this. Thank you.
And Mr. Garcetti.
Just a quick word. It's an honor to serve on your Advisory Board, Cookie. I had the pleasure of meeting with Cookie yesterday and I think my Chief of Staff asked her, with all the violence that's going on in Israel right now, are you afraid of going there? And she said, no way. And it's that fearlessness, not only in terms of who she is, but that fearlessness in tackling internationally as well as locally, that challenge of bringing people together that really sets Cookie apart and Operation Unity. And we look forward to it coming here to the City of Los Angeles and we look forward to the city being a partner with that in coming years. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Holden. I'd like to ask Councilmember Weiss to join me here as the woman I'm about to talk about was, was a resident of the Fifth Council District. And her name was Esther Gura. Esther was very involved with Operation Unity and she had a great passion for it, great passion for Operation Unity and its mission and for the young people of Los Angeles. She spent many, many, many hours inviting youngsters from Operation Unity to her home in West Los Angeles and assisted them in going to Israel. I for one attended events in her home and she and her husband Saul were always committed to broadening the horizons for young people. And they organize yearly gatherings in their homes for young people to make sure that the children or the kids who transform their lives by going to Israel for six weeks stayed in contact with each other in years, years to come and invited them to participate in their celebrations for Hanukkah and Passover with her family. She had three children, Dennis, who helped the young people learn about Jewish traditions, and her son Robert, and daughter Dahlia Madin, who introduced Operation Unity teens to the Shiba Choir from Israel. And if you are not aware of what the Shiba Choir, how it started, it's a group of young people who are originally from Ethiopia and her daughter leads them on tours all over the world. And Jack, I'll just let you say a few words about her.
Well, you know, I never met Esther Gura, but I have known her family for several years now. And they're a wonderful family and they are truly carrying on her tradition of service to the community. And it, I'm glad you could all come today and be a part of this, this recognition which is well-deserved.
And two other individuals I wanted to recognize as part of the Operation Unity mission, that would be Fred Ellsberg and David McCurry, both of whom have donated and contributed an enormous amount of their personal time and resources and rallied the community behind Operation Unity. It's a good cause and I hope at some point you'll all be able to support it. So David and Fred, if you could step up here, please. I know. How are you? Hi, Fred. And this, David. Thanks very much and thank you for all that you do and beautiful memory of Esther. This is a living testament to all that she did for all of us. So thank you.
Thank you, Council. President and Council, we appreciate the opportunity to receive this on behalf of my mom. And I just want to say a couple of words. mom, and I just want to say a couple of words that what Operation Unity stands for is exactly what my mom stood for, and that is to reach out and help people to bridge, to bridge communities together and to build understanding through personal contact. When she was a farmer in the 50s, at the height of the Cold War, she was one of the, she was a member of one of the first allegations that went to the Soviet Union, and it was pretty, it was pretty daring at that time. And that kind of spirit of going and meeting people and opening her arms up is the kind of, was part of her DNA. It's what she did all of her life. And when she met Cookie and Operation Unity, she was inspired by the program and helped to build it. And she has inspired all of us in, in her family to do the same thing, and we, we are pledged to continue in that same tradition. Thank you very much.
President, members, I want to thank the family, I want to thank Eric, my colleague, Jan Perry, and Jack Weiss for their support and contribution as well. Thank you for coming, and this has been a wonderful program.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Next, the chair recognizes Ms. Galanter for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've spent a little time this morning already congratulating city employees, some of whom are leaving. And I want to join the parade here by recognizing once again our Department of Water and Power for yet another national award. We, we all know we're proud of DWP, but we don't always remember exactly why. And besides that the water flows out of the tap and it's clean, and that the power shows up when you turn the light switch on. But we have an additional reason to be proud of them at this time. For the, I think this is the first award to a public, you know, a municipally-owned utility. Our Department of Water and Power received an award from the Financial Times for the Renewables Company of the Year. They were also finalists for two other awards in the same competition, Environmental Practice of the Year and Overall Marketing Campaign of the Year. Now, we're so used to their winning awards that we sometimes miss the significance of these things, but it is really important that this is the very first time the Financial Times has recognized a municipal utility. We were finalists in, I think, three categories last year as well, but we didn't win. And no public municipal utility won. And so we took the occasion to point out to them that they were missing something very important going on in the country. Actually, Angelina beat them up, is what happened. And they, they confessed that they, they had in fact been missing a trend. And so we, we are once again back in the finals, and we have won. Now, these awards are a national competition and international competition. There are lots of your favorite names from the energy industry appear in this, and some that most of us have never heard of that are not active right around here. But ours is the best. We're the biggest municipal utility in the country by quite a large margin, and we can once again take great pride in the fact that we are also a leader in the field of energy and water, I may say. But this particular award is for the green power program, the, the effort to switch our company and our customers from fossil fuels to renewables. And so I want to, with great pride and pleasure, congratulate everybody in the department, especially Angelina Galitova, who is in charge of the green power program. And I've got Tom Hockenson, hello there, and Jerry Gaby, who have joined Angelina here because this is really a department-wide honor, and I think we should all be very, very proud of them. So Angelina, I think you should get this, since you are the person in charge of the winning program. And we have a certificate for the department, one of many they have collected. It may not be as worth, worth as much in terms of national recognition as the Financial Times Award, but it is a symbol of love and trust, and those are worth a lot. Angelina?
Hold on a second. We have a couple of council members who want to chime in. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I want to also acknowledge the fine work, and I know that there was a concert recently done at the Dorothy Channel Pavilion, sponsored by the department, and it was Los Lobos, it was outstanding. I want to commend you on that, giving the public information that needs to be given on the wonderful work you folks are doing for over 100 years, 100 years in a, Tom LeBange, correct me, 100 years in 10 days or something? But I know it's over 100 years. And I know that Eric Garcetti, my colleague, has one of your battery-powered cars, and he's very, very pleased with it. And being the motorcycle enthusiast as I am, I know that I will be test-driving your electric motorcycle from the Department of Water and Power, and I encourage my colleagues to join me in that. You're doing a tremendous job to help the energy, to help the environment, to help the economy, and to help everyone. I just want to offer my congratulations, not only in your concert, but all the fine work you do for 100 years and 10 days. Thank you very much.
Dennis, why don't you try riding an electric-powered lawnmower?
Well, I have a gardener, so I will make him do that instead. Thank you.
Yeah, working on electric-powered leaf blowers.
Okay, that would be good.
Mr. LeBange.
Mr. President, members of council, before we salute Water and Power, I want to salute Ruth Galanter, because as much as great energy and power and green power and great water that Los Angeles gets from the department, Ruth Galanter brings that energy to the cause of green power, which is so important in looking into the future. We just celebrated our centennial for Water and Power, and thank you, Dennis, for those comments. But it's really important to look to the future and bringing this about, and all the people that are standing behind Angelina certainly are a credit to this city and, and what goes on. So I wanted to first salute Ruth Galanter for being the driving force for all of us in the area related to green power. And then I want to salute the Water and Power, which is, I'm an alumni from, which is very nice to be an alumni from an agency from the city that has such great heritage. I ask you all to stand for Water and Power first. Josephine Gonzalez and everybody back there, John, and all of you, come on up there, right behind there.
We always like to acknowledge the people who actually do the work.
Right. And, and just speaking of that, as you do, right now, as we're sitting here under the bright lights of Channel 35's great television program monitoring our council meetings, there's somebody out the line somewhere as far east as Utah, and as far north through the Mono Basin, and as far south into Orange County and Seal Beach, and all over doing work for the people of Los Angeles in all types of weather. And I also want to, also before I conclude my remarks, think of the thought, and all of us joining the thoughts, for the good recovery of the six workers who were hurt on Vermont Avenue yesterday, I believe it was yesterday, a couple of days ago on Vermont, and I know they're recovering, and some are at the Grossman Burn Center, but I want to acknowledge their work and all of you, and salute Water and Power and green power and good, clean water at a reliable rates. Thank you, Water and Power, and thank you, Ruth Galanter.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to join the chorus. This is a huge award, the Renewable Company of the Year, and we are competing against BP Amoco. We're competing against every energy company, and the best one was here in Los Angeles. It makes me immensely proud just as a resident, but as a City Council member too. It's fabulous to see that. And green power can be everywhere in the city. It means jobs, it means good rates, it means a healthy environment for each and every one of us. We need to promote Los Angeles as the green center of the universe. We need to make sure that we get those industries here and have a green technology energy park here, that we make sure that we continue to green the L.A. River at the same time, that we have the capacity to get the solar panels up, that everybody wants, and that DWP has led the way, and that we get people who are welfare to work installing those panels as well. This is an incredible program that shows that Los Angeles once again can lead, and that we have the best company in the world right here, under our own roof. So congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Galanter, for recognizing them as well. And let's look forward to, to going forward with this research, not just with, with electric motorcycles, but let's get all of our, our new buildings with solar paneling, et cetera. We have that responsibility for the seventh generation down the line. Thank you very much.
And now the department.
Well, thank you so much. It is a great honor to be here today. We are very proud of our programs. We started these programs about three years ago, and without the leadership of the City Council and of this great city, we would not be where we are today. But first and foremost, I would like to acknowledge all of our employees. These are the people that make it happen every day, and they're there making sure that these new programs become a reality for Los Angeles, and that we are there serving our customers on a daily basis. So thank you. These are also programs that are intended to become a fabric, part of the fabric of the overall department operations, and we are going to be seeing more and more green power program, more and more conservation programs as we roll them out into the future. And I noticed that the City Council does give a lot of awards, and you do recognize people for having done a good job. We didn't actually notice too many people recognizing you in return. This is the award that we received from Financial Times. It is pretty much like winning gold at the Olympics, and the analogy is very befitting right now that we are in the middle of the Olympics. But I would like to present it to City Council, and especially to Councilwoman Ruth Galanter, who has been such a great cheerleader for us, and such a great supporter for these programs for conservation, for water, energy, green power, electric transportation, and all the good programs we stand for. So here you are, and thank you so much for the support.
Let me just add one more word here. We really appreciate the support of the city, and again, we need to encourage the city as a whole to look on green power in the same way we've adopted conservation. During the last 10 years, we've completely changed our emphasis in Los Angeles to make conservation part of our way of life. Green power needs to be the same. We need to incorporate it in every portion, integrate it within the department, and integrate it within the city, and as we do forward, we'll move forward in strength together. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Galanter.
Congratulations.
Come in the back.
Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. And either folks from DWP who are just filing out, we'll give you 10 more minutes to stay if you'd like. For this presentation, yesterday, Council President Alex Padilla, many members of the Hollywood community joined me for the annual State of Hollywood address, and we looked at the 115th anniversary of Hollywood just about a month ago. But today, we have another reason to celebrate in Hollywood, not just the physical place, but the abstraction, the greater worldwide trademark known as Hollywood. Today, I am joined by Sharon Morril, who is the Executive Vice President of Walt Disney Television Animation, Howard Green, the Vice President of Studio Communications, Holly Clark, Director of Publicity Stills, and Ed Collins, the Directory of, sorry, the Director of Operations of the El Capitan, the beautiful El Capitan Theater. Because today, we are celebrating the 100th anniversary of Walt Disney's birth. He was born 100 years ago, and we have a special treat to be able to celebrate Walt Disney's legacy, his influence on making sure that Los Angeles and Hollywood were synonymous, and that we had a wealth of characters to entertain generations upon generations, not just in this city and this country, but throughout the world. It's also the 100th anniversary that the character known as Peter Pan made his first appearance in the James M. Barry book. And so I'd like to today present to Disney this certificate, which declares today, February 15th, as Peter Pan Day here in the city of Los Angeles. And just read to you a little bit from the resolution. Whereas legendary, legendary, thank you, and here he is right now, ladies and gentlemen, it's Peter Pan. Let's give him a hand. Come on, Peter. Come stand here with us. Whereas legendary film pioneer and studio founder Walt Disney was born 100 years ago, and whereas the character of Peter Pan made his first appearance a century ago in a James M. Barry book, and whereas a new special edition DVD and VHS of Disney's 1953 animated feature version, of which the council members will each get a copy today, of Peter Pan was released this week, and today marks the big screen return of those classic characters with the debut of Walt Disney's picture's all-new theatrical feature, Return to Neverland. And whereas Peter Pan has been an important literary figure and stirred the imagination of generations of readers, James, James M. Barry's play and novel have inspired numerous motion picture and television adaptations, and whereas Disney animators captured the essence of Barry's classic fantasy with animated versions of Peter Pan, The Darling Family, Captain Hook and Mr. Smee in the memorable fairy Tinker Bell, and helped to further popularize these fantastic characters, therefore be it resolved that by the adoption of this resolution, the City Council of the city of Los Angeles hereby declares Friday, February 15th, as Peter Pan Day in the recognition of these momentous events. Peter, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Would you like to say something?
On behalf of the Walt Disney Company and Peter Pan, I'd like to thank Councilman Eric Garcetti and all of you, the Los Angeles City Council, for this honor. We'd like to thank you for your support in the El Capitan Theater in the heart of Hollywood, and we'd like to share with you a little bit of the message of our movie. Our movie is about keeping magic and imagination alive in all of our hearts, no matter how old you are or how young you are, and that it's our responsibility as parents to continue to read stories to our children and to keep that imagination alive, especially in difficult times that we're going through right now. So on behalf of Peter Pan and myself, we'd like to leave you with these words. Remember that faith, trust, and pixie dust, and anything will happen. Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Garcetti, and Peter Pan, thank you. You come from a great family. Walt Disney came from Kansas on the railroad into Los Angeles and started his animation business in Hollywood on Cape Will, just east of Vermont, in the fourth district. And he would take his daughters to the merry-go-round in Griffin Park, and he would vision Disneyland and you, Peter, because without Walt Disney, you wouldn't have Peter Pan. God bless Walt Disney and the memory of Walt Disney and all the good that he's brought to this world. And God bless you, Peter, because I remember when I met your predecessor when I was five at Disneyland, and he helped me find the way. The same guy.
Thank you very much.
Happy birthday. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And for our final presentation, Mr. LeBange.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. 20 years ago, there was an amazing partnership that was created, and it was the first partnership within the United States and China, the Los Angeles Quanjo Sister City Association. As you know, we have over 21 sister cities, and this year represents that anniversary. And with me today is Jeffrey Chang, President of the Los Angeles Quanjo Sister City, and as, and as well as Bernard Cleaver, who's a representative of China Southern Airlines. And sister cities are a great program, a people-to-people program, a friendship program. Tomorrow, there's a big parade in Chinatown. You're going to be on the podium with me, okay? Which is great to represent that partnership. But the great story behind this relationship is when we signed this, and you'll like this, Mr. President, because you're so tall. Tom Bradley, the late, great Tom Bradley, and the late, great John Ferraro went to China to sign the documents to make this a business, and the great Chief of Protocol, B. Lavery, made all those arrangements. And what was so amazing, that Tom Bradley would say, and John Ferraro is going to China representing us, is that six foot four, because both men were so big, they towered over all the people, which was, and everybody came up and loved them because not only they were great, tall, beautiful men, but they also were from the great city of Los Angeles, which has our partnership and relationship. So Jeffrey, on behalf of the City Council, we want to salute you. We know you have your big event on Sunday night, and look forward to your work in the next 20 years as Chairman of the Sister City Los Angeles Program, and for all the special things you've done for the zoo, all the special things you've done in cultural exchanges, and all the special relationships you've developed with Cal State Northridge and the internship program to help bring about a modern, positive friendship between our cities. On behalf of the Council... On behalf of the council, I want to congratulate you. And before you receive this, I'd like you to say a few words. Ni hao.
Ni hao in Chinese means "how are you." And I'd like to give my special thanks to Councilman Labange and to the members of this council. On behalf of our chairman, Mrs. Carolyn Anderson, the founder of the Sister City Association, and over 120 members of our association. And I also like to take advantage of this opportunity to acknowledge our patron member, China Southern Airlines. And today, with me is their Marketing Manager, Bernard Cleaver. Five years ago, when China Southern Airlines decided to extend its business to North America, their first choice was actually San Francisco. But we succeeded in convincing them that Los Angeles is the better choice and is definitely the best city in the West Coast. So, in the last five years, they have provided direct flight from Los Angeles to our sister city, Guangzhou. And thank you very much. It's a great privilege to work with the city on many, many exciting international exchange programs. And I thank you all.
Thank you. We'd like to ask Bernard Cleaver, Representative of China Southern Airlines.
Thank you very much for inviting us today. And I'd like to invite you all to come to China. As we are... China Southern is providing the only nonstop service between Los Angeles and Guangzhou, the sister city. But also, on behalf of all the airline people in Los Angeles, thank you very much for your support and for your great work at the airport. Thank you.
Thank you, members, very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. This concludes the presentation segment of today's meeting. I believe we have temporarily lost a quorum. We're awaiting the return of Mr. Burnson to continue with the agenda for the day. Mr. President, item number two is before you. It's a call special by Councilmember Labange. Mr. Labange is in the back. Let's hold that on the desk. I believe item 14, called special by Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Pacheco? Item 14. I understand your questions have been answered. Okay. Anybody else wishing to be heard on item 14? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 14. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Labange, on item two. That has been resolved. Anybody wishing to be heard on item number two? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Colleagues, that brings us to our final item. Item number five. Want to mention that we have a few cards submitted to speak on item five. Public hearing has been held on this item. So, motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Item five, called special by Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden? Item number five. If I can ask you to push your button, please.
Members, an item... We've had a number of public hearings on this already, you're right. So, no need to have more. I just want to say that this man has been with us since 1987. I pull out some motions that were repealed by Holden Ferrara in 1990 and in 1987. 1990, Ferrara, Holden took the position. And I worked with Ferrara because he represented the adjacent district, as Mr. Labange does at this time. And we wanted to save the Busher corridor and maintain revival businesses in that area. We were under impression then and now that if you were to co-mingle the business community with a school, that the businesses would... The threat of it even would drop the businesses out of that community. And that, in fact, happened. So, that train has come and gone. And now, the school district took control of the property by invoking an eminent domain. And we had a new beginning. But since 1992, when they invoked eminent domain, we worked with the school district and the potential developer for the purpose of having a joint development, a mixed use in that area. Some of that school district was agreeing to from time to time, except they couldn't get together under price. They would pay the developer for the money that they felt they were entitled to, or vice versa. Pay the school what they felt they were entitled to. However, the school district had agreed to, in my office, to go through Seventh Street. That's on the general plan. If the development were occurring in that area, they would go straight through the Seventh Street cut through. And the school would be on the backside of the lot. And the development would be on the front. It would perhaps not save the community that we once knew, the business community, but it would certainly not adversely affect it in the future. And that's what we were hoping to accomplish. Mr. President, members, I know the conservancies say they have a standing in this case. They do not. And what they would, in fact, do is put us in peril of a lawsuit. Because the Shahn family negotiated a settlement with the city of Los Angeles in 1987. 7/31/87. Whereby... I need a little more time to explain this further. Whereby, they said that they would not request a demolition permit or withhold that demo permit. All right. Mr. President, members, Mr. Burnson said he wants to leave. I just wanted to give the other members the facts, because they were not here at the time. If we were to change this now, we would be subject to a lawsuit by the Shahn family. I can assure you of that. Because they could have demolished. And they did. The Conservancy has no standing. And I can show this, this is the city's position. The city's position then and now. If we change it, look for a lawsuit. We should give the Board of Education, the school district, the right to develop the property. And we would encourage them, as they see fit, whether without a school, if that's their opinion. But they have that right because they own the property now. And there was an agreement between the Shahn family and the city of Los Angeles. As a matter of record, and therefore a matter of law. And I would like to suggest that we encourage, however, the school district to do what they were discussing doing in the future, that is, have a school cut through Seventh, according to the general plan, and to have the mixed use of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
And that would be my motion, the same as the original motion, Mr. President.
Mr. Zine.
Just one quick question before Councilman Burnson leaves. I know Councilman Rahon had an issue regarding the community meeting regarding this. The last time it came up. Has that all been resolved?
You can make that a part of the motion.
I thought that was already done. And my only concern was...
They had a community meeting. That is correct.
What was the outcome?
They just talked.
So, you want this supported? You want a yes vote on this?
I want a yes vote on my original motion.
Thank you.
Will you open the roll, Mr. President? Mr. Labange.
Yeah, I know. I would like to move that we continue this to Tuesday to have Janice Hahn here. She's the Chairman of Neighborhoods. I think it's very important and needs a lot of thoughtful discussion. And I know everybody's rushing. So, I'd like to continue this, move this to continue. I'm going to continue this to Tuesday.
Okay. Motion, continue this matter until Tuesday's meeting, February 19th. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
7 ayes, 3 noes.
Doesn't carry. That's what I mentioned. It doesn't carry. Mr. Burnson, that is what I said. Motion doesn't carry. You now have... Which motion is before us, Mr. Clerk? Mr. Labange, you should speak again.
I want to speak again. I want to speak about the Ambassador Hotel. And Mr. Holden is right, O'Reilly, about the discussion based on the many, many years of discussion of the planning that took place there and the fight that the city has. And a lot of the community has been involved with this. A lot of the community has stated what they want, what they don't want. The school district now has required...
Mr. Labange, I'm going to hold your time. We've lost a quorum. We've lost Mr. Burnson once again. Let's see if we can get him back. Okay. Mr. Labange, back in your time.
We have representatives of the school district here. I'd like to ask them to speak.
I know the public hearing is... Public hearing has been held. And we haven't had a motion to reopen the public hearing at this time. Okay. I think what may be the most prudent course of action here is to continue the matter until Tuesday. I know that matter has not passed. Mr. Burnson is clearly anti-to get going. If we adjourn for lack of a quorum, the matter holds over until Tuesday anyway.
You guys learned the tricks right away.
You would know.
They always come back to haunt you.
Okay. Well, we've lost quorum once again. Let's carry the matter over until Tuesday. Mr. Weiss.
I could just briefly move to reconsider item number two so we can move to receive and file.
Well, if we don't have a quorum, we...
It's here for that purpose. I just want to move to reconsider.
Before we do that, then, let's just be in agreement. We will continue item number five until next Tuesday's meeting.
That's why you came back to vote. And I moved the previous question.
Mr. Labange is still speaking. If we want to be technical about it, we're back on his time.
He's done.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, which motion is before us? Stand on item number five. I believe it's the committee report that is before you, which is based upon Mr. Holden's original motion. Mr. Holden had made a motion, I believe, in...
My original motion, that was to suggest to the district that they have a joint mixed use.
So, is that a motion to substitute, Mr. Holden?
Yeah. It would be a substitute. Go back to your original motion, which would be a substitute.
Okay. So, let's open the roll. Is that clear, everybody? We have the committee report. Mr. Holden has moved his original motion as a substitute for the committee report. Substitute motions require 10 votes.
Which also includes public hearings by the school district. Which includes public hearings by the school district. Thank you.
Just want to be very clear on this. We all know what we're doing. The motion to substitute requires 10 votes.
No, it does not.
Madam City Attorney?
8.
8 votes. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. First, on the motion to substitute, the original motion for the committee report, please open the roll.
I will.
Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
7 ayes, 3 noes.
Does not pass. So, the committee report is still before us?
That is correct.
Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
You want to do it?
If we move to reconsider, we do an end?
No, we're not done yet. We're not done with item five yet. On item five, we have the committee report before us. Please open the roll. The roll is open. Vote now. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
6 ayes, 4 noes.
Does not carry. So, the matter is held over until Tuesday. Matter is held over until Tuesday. Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, I move to reconsider item number two for the purpose of moving that that item be received and filed.
Okay. Motion to reconsider item number two. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. We have a request to receive and file, item number two. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Item two is received and filed. And I believe that brings us to the end of the agenda. We have once again lost a quorum. We have one public comment card. Ms. Candace Owen, you're more than welcome to address us at this time. Please note that due to lack of a quorum, council is not officially in session.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Candace Owen. I'm suffering now, four years later, the ramifications of the West LA Police Department's failure to properly investigate as it relates to welfare institution codes and following their own policies and procedures as it relates to arresting children. I've read in the paper recently that now parents are going to be prosecuted for minor child abuse offenses. Until the West LA and all of your police departments can know and properly administer their own investigations, we are going to have problems. We're going to have children being taken away unjustly from their parents. I went through hell and I got my little girl back. And I'm trying now, today, to deal with my parking tickets. The city took my BMW. They also took my Honda. So, today, all I wanted to do was figure out where would one go to pay and begin the process of these parking tickets? Well, it was bureaucracy all over the place. I received... I had to turn myself in last week to Twin Towers. I received from Twin Towers that I had a court date. However, 3,000 South Robertson Municipal Court no longer exists as of two years ago, approximately. So, I called City Hall this morning. I finally got the address of where I'm supposed to go. And I just wanted to know the phone number. So, I had a kind lady here. I think her number was number 29. She says, "Well, let me transfer you to the county people." So, I dealt with the county people. And all I dealt with all morning was bureaucracy, bureaucracy, bureaucracy. Now, it's a violation of my constitutional rights because my property value is supposed to be more. My car is valued in my constitutional rights. But the city changed the policy on it. So, now you can sell my car. Who gets the money for my car? Does any of that money go to pay for any of these parking tickets? No. What do you do? You go and you build roads and so forth. When a citizen comes and all we want to do is know a very simple answer. Where do I go to pay for my parking tickets? I don't have the parking tickets because they're in storage. Okay? It's a simple thing. It should be a simple thing. I have the address. Now, I went and I dealt with the Purdue office. I had a gentleman there after hearing my frustration on the phone. He said, "Candace, why don't you call me back at 12 o'clock? And I'm going to see what I can do to help you find the phone number." Because when he assisted me the first time, he was able to get me the fax number. Now, I sat here this morning. I saw this stuff about Israel and everything. Let me tell you one thing. I was in Twin Towers for three days. I observed the laws of kosher. I did not eat for three days. The rabbi didn't come till Thursday. I'm tired of dealing with the bureaucracy. I come here. I came to West LA initially for help. They didn't help me. Department of Children and Family Services called 911, said there was a suicide attempt. Chief Parks, a year later, assisted me in obtaining that 911 call. On the 24th of this month, I will be filing my federal lawsuit. Do you think I want to do that? Do you think I want to deal with the bureaucracy Do you think I want to deal with the bureaucracy and knowing what I've learned with the courts? No. But I will file my lawsuit under the auspices and under the hope that I can get case law, that parents will not have to deal with the ramifications, because your city employees failed to follow their policies and procedures. And this whole city is run on administrative law and policies. You evade the law, you evade it to the extent that I'm four years now fighting. I live in a hotel.
I can ask you to include, please.
My little girl has to suffer with me taking the bus. All I want to do is get a car. If there's anybody here, I live in Westwood. Whoever my City Council member is, you have my telephone on there. If somebody can get me the information that I need today, that would be great.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment period for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, is the desk clear? The desk is clear. Are there any announcements? Any adjourning motions?
I know it's a bit long, but I think it's important. It's President's Day weekend, so we want to salute all presidents, including Mr. Padilla, but we're talking about the United States of America. But I'd just like to ask my colleagues to go around the room before we finalize the day. I thought of this coming in. Who was our favorite president right now in our history, so we can ask all Angelitos to remember the President of the United States over this holiday weekend? So maybe I'll start with you, Mr. Padilla. Who's your favorite president?
Well, I have to say, I never had an opportunity to meet the man, but if nothing else, then a source of inspiration through his legacy and his service, a little bit more of which we've learned through the movie Thirteen Days, certainly John F. Kennedy.
The Rough Rider, Teddy Roosevelt. He was progressive, strong, and a warrior. All right. And a Republican. All right, Eric.
The other Roosevelt.
I have a number of favorite presidents. Of course, I liked Clinton and Carter a lot. And I liked, another good friend of mine is Roosevelt, Franklin D. Roosevelt. He and I saw eye to eye. And then I have another one that I like. You guys should read something about this individual. He said, "The buck stops here." Harry Truman.
Harry Truman.
That's right. Harry Truman. And that's the way it goes with every elected official. You can't pass the buck. When you have a task before you, hey, don't run and hide. Don't go up and down, or around it, or under it. Face it head-on. Don't test the wind. See which way the wind blows, because that's what too many elected officials do from time to time. Do your job, do not shirk your responsibility. As Truman said, "The buck stops here." Thanks for the question.
Well, you mentioned, Nate, I want to add, I love Franklin Delano Roosevelt. And Eric, I love Theodore Roosevelt, the great Rough Rider, the naturalist who came out here and had a great promotion with John Muir for all the open space in national parks. Could I ask Nick?
Mr. President, colleagues, I was simply gonna add, I guess, Mr. Holden's choice with President Truman.
I see our Truman.
That's it? I don't need to repeat everything he said.
Wait, wait, say it again, Jen.
I said Bill Clinton, he made things interesting.
Good question, but you know, I think it's, I take issue with the question, because there are a number of presidents who did extraordinary things that I can't choose between them. Responding to you today, I'd say Lyndon Johnson for civil rights and the great society, and I'd say FDR for creating Social Security and for changing America. But at this moment, right now, 12:14 PM in the afternoon, I'd go with Calvin Coolidge for being silent, because I think the time has come to adjourn.
I liked Eisenhower. I remember seeing the President one time when I was a youth. Kennedy was always a hero, and our current president, who would fall in that category of a stand-up leader to do the right thing.
Ask now what your city can do for you, ask what you can do for your city.
And also, just to let you know, too, that also, when Ronald Reagan just celebrated his birthday recently, he was one of the few who actually graced this chamber in a ceremony years ago in 1981 when he's elected. Thank you for your time on that, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Are there any adjourning motions? Please rise. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, members of the public, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Christine Owens, who passed away on my birthday this year, February 4th. She was 62 years old and taught first grade for 27 years, 13 years at Our Lady of Lourdes School, and 14 years at Mountain View Elementary School. She loved teaching and reading. She was married to Tom Owens for 40 years, who was the CEO and president of St. Anne's Maternity Home in the 13th District. She was survived by her husband, Tom, her daughter Susan, her sons Peter and Stephen, and her grandchildren, Andrew, Eric, and Catherine. She will be dearly missed.
Any others? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Please enjoy the President's Day weekend.